Keep in mind that I'm filling in right now and coming up with something quick. But this past week, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of shows on TV talking about an anniversary that's coming up on April 19th. And the Boston Marathon tragedy, which is something that just stands in your mind. And having it on TV again just refreshes all the agony and tears that came out of that, and angst that came out of that tragedy to our country. So as we approach that anniversary, if we could keep in our hearts, in our prayers, the people who went through it, the families who lost folks in that particular tragedy, and pray that we no longer have to deal with those kinds of things in our country anymore. Fledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, in the event of a fire or an emergency, there are emergency exits to the immediate rear of the chamber, also down the stairs, through this door to my left, down the stairs and out to the parking lot. May I have a roll call, please, Kathy?
Mrs. LeBlanc? Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston? Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Peabody?
Present.
Mrs. Angier?
Here.
Mr. Warwer?
Here.
Mr. Grady? Chairman Serrard?
Here. Board guests, Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two representatives from Enfield Kite, Chris Como and Karen West Lisa. They're going to tell you just a little bit about the reendorsement of the Graustein Memorial Trust Fund grant, which the board will be taking up under new business tonight.
Hi, I'm Karen West Lisa, 25, Renee Lane, chairman of Kite.
I'm Chris Como, 19, Winter Way, Kite coordinator.
William Kasper Graustein, since 2001, has been our major benefactor. They have every year granted us money based on, sometimes an outright grant, more recently it's been on a match. And again, we are looking for your permission to apply for the grant, which is up to $50,000. We raise, we have to raise 25, and they match up to $50,000. So our work is to go out into the community and raise money, and your job is to say, yes, you can do that.
Just to let you know, I think we've been before you where we have presented to you our, the Enfield Early Childhood Community Plan. This is the third year of plan implementation. So the Graustein Memorial Fund supported our community with their discovery work, and that started in 2001. In 2010, we began community planning with a planning grant from the Graustein Memorial Fund, and we are now heading into our third year of plan implementation, beginning July 2014. This year, our grant is a one-year grant for the next fiscal year, but again, it's the exact implementation grant that we've applied for, for the past two years.
I had the privilege of going to the meeting the other night, and this was talked about there. But, correct me if I'm wrong, is this the last grant that we can apply for under this cycle?
Under the, under discovery.
Yeah.
We've completed that phase of it. What Graustein comes up with, we don't, we don't know. We don't know if there's going to be anything extended beyond this last year of funding.
So my guess would be that we're looking at a variety of sources to make up for any of this in the next couple of years? Is that be correct?
Right, we will be looking for sustainability options beyond, you know, Graustein. Graustein will always, I think, at some, on some level, stay involved with the work because they're so spread out throughout the state of Connecticut. But for, in terms of discovery funding, this is it.
That's really been a wonderful benefactor for so many years.
Unbelievable. We have been so fortunate to be able to do what we've done with their, basically with their help.
And I just think that it's important to also mention that they, their strategic plan went up through this current funding year that we're in right now. They are in the process of a new executive director taking over. David Nie has now left. So we do not know what the funding will look like next year, once the new executive director gets in. I'm sure those decisions will be made, but we've been assured that the Graustein Memorial Fund is not just going to walk away from the work that they've been doing. You know, for communities, there's 54 discovery communities in Connecticut, so we do not know what that will look like. I mean, we have been growing with them. We started doing discovery work, and then they went to community planning, and we were ready to go to community planning, and then they went to implementation, and we were there as well. So I know that Enfields looked upon very highly by the Graustein Memorial Fund, so it is our hope that we will continue to grow with them past fiscal year 14, 15.
The work we've done here has been highlighted in a number of different venues that Graustein has sponsored. Their Stone Soup Conference had some of our work highlighted there. They've been at the National League of Cities, we've had our work highlighted there. So the work we're doing here is very far-reaching, you know, beyond the fact that it's helped so many kids here. It's also modeling for other communities. So we're pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish over the last 11 years.
I think you should be. I think you should be. You've done a great job. This grant, it's for the 2014 to 15?
Yes.
A year?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As always, we're happy to address any questions.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have our two student representatives here. I'll let you choose who's going to go first. There is some information in your packet they have submitted for you as well.
So our spring athletics have begun their season. They've been practicing for a couple of weeks, and many of our teams are having, are starting their competitive season tomorrow. The first baseball and softball games and the first track meet will be at home tomorrow, and the boys tennis and volleyball teams will be competing away. On Thursday is Family Science Night at 6:00 PM. Many Fermi students help with all the demonstrations that are put on by our science teachers, and the event is fantastic. All the kids love all the hands-on experience they get with these fun and creative science demonstrations. And finally, Fermi Lamp Lighters will be putting on their last show of the year on Friday and Saturday. On Friday, they will be performing at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday, 2:00 and 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Fermi Enfield.
Okay, I don't have a lot today. I just have three things. Last week, we had our capped breakfast, and we had a good number of students, I think there was 30, and Sam Richards won the award for getting all fives on every subject in cap. And this Fri, this Thursday, we have our post-secondary planning program for the juniors, and parents are welcome to attend. It'll be in our auditorium at 7:15 in the morning. And our Safe Grade Tag Sale will be on May 2nd and 3rd at 1275 Enfield Street. If you have anything that you would like to donate for them to sell and help with the cause, there's more information about that on the school website. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Christine. Dr. Schuman?
Just one other item. In your packet, there is a flyer for the Family Science Fair. The Partners in Education are sponsoring this on Thursday, April 10 at 6:00 PM, and it'll be held in the science rooms at Enrico Fermi High School.
Audiences, do we have anyone who speaks of board? No. Board member comments, since Ms. LeBlanc is not here? We go to Mr. Neville.
Very good. Just a couple of things. One, I just, there's a flyer we got several times, but I know I got it at Kite, and I, actually, I think Dr. Schuman was involved in this as well. And I believe it's called Building a More Active Enfield with Mark Fenton. I think it's Thursday night. I think you have to call and sign up for it. And I, we're co-sponsoring it with both the council and, I believe, Park and Rec and Enfield Land Use Commissions, Commission on Aging, Office of Economic Development, and Kite, and so on and so on. But I think it's a good thing. Anybody that looks at this will see it's a good thing for Enfield, and I think you'll find it a nice night if you can get out to it. Also, the other meeting when we had the celebration from all the schools and supporting us for all the work that we do, I don't know about the rest of you, but I took all that pile of stuff that I had, that I didn't get a chance to look at, and looked at it this past week, and it was really, really impressive. Some of the things that the kids did were wonderful, and we just didn't have the time that night to do it because we had a pretty full agenda. But I would like to thank the folks from Crandall for the things they put together for me, some personal things in terms of my liaison responsibilities. They were very, very cleverly done and well-done, and I just want to thank them for all their support. I know we all appreciate it from them, and I just want to make sure that they understand how much we do. That's it.
Ms. Thurston?
I just wanted to wish all the kids good luck. They're at the spelling bee right now, over at the middle school. I'm so, I'm so proud of them because I so cannot spell, so I wish them the best of luck.
Mr. Genitis?
Good luck to all the kids during the testing season that they were about to embark on. And all you had was a basketball game last night. Congratulations to the men, UConn, and good luck to the women tonight. It's going to be an interesting shake of the hands after the game, I think. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Peabody?
Thank you. Couple of weeks ago, I got to go to Nathan Hale for their spirit assembly, and it was just a wonderful experience. You know, seeing the kids work and seeing the teachers actually enjoying themselves. They had a good time working with the children, and the kids had a good time as well. I did get to meet and speak with Leigh Anne Boleo, principal. You know, they had this one book, one school theme going on, and that means a lot to me when I see young kids really getting into reading, and they were, they were enjoying themselves. After that, I went over to Henry Barnard to the dinosaur exhibit. I had a busy Friday afternoon. Please don't tell my boss. And I met with Nancy Hayes, the principal. She took me down to the second grade dinosaur exhibit, and even though I asked Pete if he was going to be there, he wasn't, but I did see a little dinosaur-rama with Pete and me in it, so that was pretty cool. Great, great, great work done by second graders, and their writing skills were phenomenal. It was a job well-done. Then Saturday, I went to the art exhibit over at Enfield High, and I got to give a shout-out to Richard Fahy. He and his team just did a fantastic job of pulling this together. I'd been there before. My children have participated in it, and it was just a really worthwhile thing to do. So that was pretty cool. Then I want to give some shout-outs. 2010 graduates, Patrick Kotner. He went to Pace College. I believe he graduated. He's worked at Sesame Street, Saturday Night Live, and I think he was an assistant with Jimmy Kimmel, so we're going to see him up and coming out there in the world. He'll probably become the next Lorne Michaels or something like that. Jack Shaughnessy, class of 2010, he's graduating from BU with honors in mechanical engineering, and he has a job in his field. But Mr. Neville pointed out the tragedy and the events that happened last April in Boston. There's a young lad, class of 2010, got off the bus in the middle of that mayhem. He then got some of his musician friends together, and a very cold day, within an hour, raised $300 for the Boston One Fund. And he also happens to be my son. But you didn't hear anything about it because he didn't make a big deal about it, and I thought that was fantastic. He did what I would expect him to do. And last week, he called me up, and after UMass Boston, he just got accepted through Berklee School of Music. Thank you, John Powers, and thank you, Mark Rapucci, for lighting a fire in that kid, and he is into music like you wouldn't believe. And I think that's a great way to end my comments.
Ms. Angier?
Hi, I just wanted to make a few comments about the Fermi Science Night. It's really all hands-on, and I wanted to encourage everyone to go. You can learn how to make GAC and learn about magnets and some hands-on chemistry. So I think that sounds like it'd be great for the family. I attended Fermi's talent show, and I thought they did a great job. There's a lot of talent over there. It was done really well. I also attended an open house at JFK for all the fifth graders to introduce them to their new school, and they really did a bang-up job, so kudos to the principal there and the teachers, and they had over 300 people show up for that. So it's new students and parents, and the administration and the staff just really did a good job, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Mr. Warwer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not at the last Board of Ed meeting. I was tied up at a basketball function with a family member, and had things turned out otherwise, I'd be in Nashville tonight, but it didn't happen. Did want to recognize some folks, actually, who, parents who helped out with the Buzz Robotics Pasta Supper. I would have done this at the last meeting. Suzanne Tuohy and Mary Lynn, and Leigh Anne Boyer. So there are, Mary Lynn is the, Osborne is the advisor. I want to acknowledge all three of those folks for putting on a very successful fundraising event for Buzz Robotics. I like, like Ray, I think I'm following Ray around, listening to his comments, where he's been in the past few weeks. I did also go to the Dinosaur Museum. It was very interesting, very rewarding, very creative. Students and instructors, all very excited, and the students did a great job. I was looking at pictures from the Enfield Press, and I said, I remember these students, and some of them are very talkative. I mean, they're going to be first-rate public speakers, or presenters, or designers. They're pretty, pretty smart kids for second graders. I also want to mention that I did attend a Henry Barnard PTO organization meeting last month, and I want to thank Bethany Ulet, the president of the Barnard PTO, for all the great work she does. And I should, I do want to recognize, in closing, that her daughter Caitlin had an exhibit at the Arts Festival at Enfield High, a very colorful lion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, to dovetail on, both on the left and the right, congratulations to the UConn men, good luck to the UConn women. I attended a Board of Ed Chairman's Roundtable Conference at Cave. I'm on the record several times saying that Enfield is very unique, and one of the things that I learned at this conference was that of all of the challenges that the individual school districts face throughout the state, Enfield faces all of them. So I think we're pretty close to being alone in that group. Also, on budgetary issues, the state has recently proposed a cut in their excess cost, so I'm asking everyone, please call your representatives and ask them to change their minds. And I'm going to leave it at that, so. Unfinished business. Moving on, new business. Board of Ed endorsement for the Graustein Memorial Trust Fund grant. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Enfield Board endorse the Graustein Memorial Trust Fund grant.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a roll call?
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Peabody?
Yes.
Angier?
Yes.
Mr. Warwer?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, ladies. We also have a matter before the Board of the approval of a Simkavitz resolution. Dr. Schuman?
Actually, Mr. Dreszek has the information on this one for you.
Mr. Dreszek?
So as you're aware, the Board was awarded a generous gift from the Abraham Simkavitz estate, and we are in the, and Mrs. LeBlanc, we brought this up at the Finance Committee meeting. We are in the process of finalizing the transferring of the funding for that. Ironically, when this process began, the signatures in order to accept the funds were of previous board members. So based on our legal advice, we were asked to have the Board read a simple motion, a resolution to authorize three positions to sign on behalf of, to accept the funds for the Simkavitz estate from this point forward. Those positions would be the Board Chair, the Superintendent, or the Deputy Superintendent, whereas in the past, the resolution was specific names of board members, of which some are currently not residing on the Board. So I do have a resolution here for the Board, if the Board is interested in agreeing to allow us to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Genitis?
In this resolution that you have, with respect to any matters affecting the estate, do we foresee something happening again?
No, no. In a nutshell, there's a final release of the funds that has to be signed and authorized by the Board of Ed, and the names on record, nothing had changed, except the names on record in order to sign that document were previous board members. So we just need a resolution to close out the accounts, not close out the accounts, to accept the accounts that were in the process.
So this is just a formality to sign?
We can't take the money in because we don't have on record from the Board authorizing anyone who's currently here to sign for it.
Okay. What did we end up getting, finally, in the end?
It was, I don't want to give you an exact number because I don't want to give it to be wrong.
Ballpark, Yankee Stadium?
It was in excess of several million dollars. I want to say somewhere around two, but don't hold me to it. I can certainly get that information out to the Board as quickly as possible tomorrow.
I'd like to see that. And do you have any idea what the lawyers ended up getting out of this?
I don't know off the top of my head with regards to legal fees. I know that the Finance Committee did get a final settlement report to authorize us to bring this forward, to close it out. We could certainly have that information sent to the entire Board if you'd like.
I would like that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Warwer?
Peter, we discussed this at length at Finance Committee meeting, and, you know, I think we went over and over and over on this, so it, we did look at this thoroughly. Well, I ask because I'm curious, with approaching $2 million, it's a pretty hefty difference in what originally was awarded. And I'm just curious where a lot of it ended up going.
Lawyers?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Neville?
Yeah, I think I know the answer to this, but just, you don't have to be specific with it, but my understanding is, once the money is transferred here, it's being, it's going into a managed account that's going to be trying to build that so that the interest can be used to fund the various gifted programs that we have, correct?
Correct.
Correct, but I just, when we're talking about that kind of money, I just, for the public's sake, I wanted, I just wanted to get it out there that it's going into a managed account to increase, to increase as much as we can, because we only can use the interest on that money for that program.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Kathy, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Peabody?
Yes.
Mrs. Angier?
Yes.
Mr. Warwer?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
For the record, I'd like to read the resolution into the record. It's the Enfield Board of Education authorizes the chairperson of the Enfield Board of Education, the superintendent of the Enfield Public Schools, or the deputy superintendent of the Enfield Public Schools, to sign on behalf of the Enfield Board of Education with respect to any matters affecting the estate of Abraham Simkavitz. Board Committee reports. Curriculum Committee?
I'm going to do Kite first, if that's okay. Ms. LeBlanc isn't here. We both went to that meeting, so if that's all right with you, I'd just soon update you.
Mr. Neville, you have the floor.
Very good. As I said before, I had the privilege to go to the Kite meeting. I've gone, my wife is on the Kite Committee, and we tend to go to that one together because we both have that interest. There were several major things that were there, but the, one was to bring the grant to the Board here, and that's, and we've certainly taken care of that. But the other one has to do with the discovery grant, where they have to do a community self-assessment each year over the three years. Okay? And I've watched that happen. It's a very, very detailed plan, and we assessed the plan as a group. And, you know, it took several hours as we went through that, but it's really, really impressive to hear what our folks are doing there. And I know that all of us that were there, as we checked off the things that this community is accomplishing, it's just really, really quite amazing. The folks from the Graustein were very, very impressed as well because of the support that we have from the community, and the support we have from the principals. The fact that we have three principals there every time, they just, that's just unheard of in most of the discovery grants that they have there. And our people are there, they're active participants, they meet in addition to that, not just the monthly meetings, and so on. I think, secondly, they were very, very impressed with the support that we have from the Board and from, and from the town council, both in the, in the person of the superintendent and from the mayor. Whatever we need in terms of support, these folks are there. And I think we were telling Dr. Schuman the other day that, you know, his ears must have been ringing because he was getting kudos from virtually everybody there for the support that they were getting. And it extends to all kinds of areas. One in particular that I think would be near and dear to Mr. Peabody's heart here is the idea of collecting data. They're working big time to do that, and they're working with us. They're working, you know, they were invited by Dr. Schuman to meet with them and talk about how we can collaborate on getting this data into the system so that we can use it to make decisions down the road here, using our data warehouse software and so on. They were meeting with these folks and McCurnan and with Guy Barasset to talk about how we can mesh these data, data collecting efforts so that, so that we can, we can make decisions on that. So usually, we have a lot of other items to report on, but basically, the work of it was, this time, was the grant itself and was also the community self-assessment. And I think one thing we did ask them to do, though, because we have several new board members here, was to come here maybe quarterly and give us an update on how that data is being used, what kinds of successes that we have here. We talk about data. We don't always talk about how it translates into student success, and I think these folks are doing a good job, and with the super, with the chair's permission to the superintendent, if we could bring them here quarterly, just to give a brief update and have, and have a chance for the Board to ask some questions. They're more than willing to do it, and we personally would like to see that happen. That's it. Moving on to curriculum. Stacy and Ray and myself were there, and we had a guest there at our last meeting. Mr. Genitis was there, and we welcomed him, and I think his ears were ringing because we were talking about technology a lot, and I, and something near and dear to his heart, I know that. But one of the things that I think the folks in the committee will tell you is that, as we talk about curriculum, we see technology and curriculum dovetailing together. You can't talk about one without the other. And you can, you know, and even in our budget discussions, we talk about technology, but we have to look at it together. And so as part of our discussion of the last couple of meetings, we'd asked Ann to bring in the technology plan, which is a three-year plan, that I don't think everybody's seen or read and stuff like that. And she went over that and did a kind of a synopsis of it for the group, and we had a good discussion. All four of us did, all five of us, including Ann. And I think I'd be remiss in saying that we're all very, very impressed with Ann's knowledge of how to use this stuff in the most constructive way and the most efficient way. I mean, she really, really is good at it. I think what we wished we had done was taped the meeting that we had, this, because it was, it was so valuable. So instead, we asked Ann to put together a quick synopsis of it and a PowerPoint, and we'd like to do it at one of our budget meetings, because it really is very, very informative. Have her come in. I don't think it would take more than 10 minutes, Mr. Chairman, to kind of go through that and bring the Board up to speed on that precise connection. We're not doing things haphazardly. We're doing things in a very, very deliberate way, and I think that's, in my mind, that's the best way to go about doing it. And so we'd like to do is schedule her, and if you want, we just got copies, so I'll ship you out the PowerPoint. I'll ship it to you, and you can ship it out to the Board. And if we could put her on the agenda for one of our two remaining meetings to talk about the budget, she said she'd be willing to come and present, if that's okay with you, Dr. Schuman.
That's fine with me, and I can put it in the Friday packet if you'd like, the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, great. Anything else from my members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Couple of things that, during the three-year plan, that impressed me was she was a little bit ahead of schedule.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that is ridiculously phenomenal, pardon my grammar, because most enterprises take like three years to get where Ms. McCurnan's gotten, 20 months. So that, that's impressive. The other thing is that she also mentioned you got a grant from 3M and for $20,000 towards STEAM, and I think that that is another positive thing that the Curriculum Committee's doing. I would challenge them, though, to get grants in excess of their salaries, combined salaries, and put that as a metric. But anyway, the thing that I also came away with is that they're starting to leverage web conferencing. We've been doing it in industry for years. It's not the most desired way to do something, but I'll tell you what, it saves money.
saves money. Saves people travel time, and it saves, it just makes it for a more, I'm gonna say, efficient way of communicating. It may not be the most effective way that people are used to, but people do get information that they do need. The other thing that Ms. McCurnan is doing is, she's reaching out to other school districts to share the cost of conferences, having speakers come that may be $2,000, and they'll split the cost with South Windsor she was talking about. Those are the things that the public needs to know. And they need to know it because they always look at the school system as a, as a money-eaten monster. And they need to see that. We're not just doing that. We're trying to, in small ways, build up momentum to become a cost-effective organization. The last thing is, is when I was going around talking to teachers and got stopped and stop and shop of all places, there's a lot of change going on in our system that Ann is the focal point and change agent for, her and her team. You know, everybody, very positive kudos to Ms. McCurnan and Dr. Schuman. However, there was a question about the pace of change. And I think it would be good if folks found out why we're going so fast. They may be taking it negative. They may be taking it as legislative mandates, whatever. That information needs to get out of there. And as I said last night, Gartner Group, an industry consulting firm, has stated it takes three years for change to occur within any, medium to large enterprises. And as I said before, we're a little bit ahead of that curve, but we just make sure we're not pacing it too quickly, and then maybe figure out how to change that, if we can.
Mr. Chairman, I think the good news is, is that, it's an overused term, people are thinking outside the box. They're coming up with creative solutions, and I think you have the right people there. They're doing that. And I, you know, when we were looking for efficiencies, she wasn't, she wasn't backing off from that. She was looking for the same things we were, and came up with some very, very interesting ideas that we'll bring up at a later date, but we have to flush them out a little bit more. But it was, it was a good, healthy conversation, and we invite anybody to come in. It's enlightening, I think, to come in and hear how it all fits together. And we need to look, we need to see how those pieces fit together. Thank you.
You guys are easily excitable.
We're glad to have you there, Peter.
You've got us all excited, Peter.
Ms. Thurston?
You know what? I will say, when I first started on this committee, I was scared out of my mind. But going there and with Mrs. McCurnan, you walk away, you actually, I'm like, okay, I understand what she's talking about. Like, I can do this. I know what, like, I can see her, her vision. So, Dr. Schuman, she is just, she is spot-on. You did, you did good with her.
Couldn't agree more.
So, my question is, since we're talking about having a board-level presentation, wouldn't it be more appropriate to have a regular board meeting with the PowerPoint?
Well, we can do it either way.
Share it with the public?
I think that'd be great. That'd be great.
I think that would be a better idea.
I think Peter even walked away knowing, like, oh, my God, I understand what that is. And it was technology.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Mr. Wauer?
Policy Committee, Mr. Genitis, Deputy Superintendent Dreszek, and I met on April 3rd, 2014 at 4:30 PM. And the reason why we do not have recommendations on the table tonight for you to look at, I will summarize them, though, is because of some procedural, procedural activities. So we'll have, we have to get it on the calendar and on the agenda. We will for the next meeting. There's going to be brought to the Board a policy on a use of physical force restraint at the next meeting. We're gonna, child abuse neglect, that's just a review. And then I believe if, if the Curriculum Committee can relook at things, we will have a revision to the existing promotion-retention policy as well. Peter, do you have anything else?
I think that first part where you said, as far as physical restraint, in lieu or with regards to special ed.
That is correct, special ed. But we'll put it on the table for the whole Board in two weeks. And I will remind everyone, if they want to look at the minutes of October, October 8th, 2013, you can see the, look like an hour discussion on that policy. We're finally bringing it back to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wauer. Last item on the Board Committee reports would be the use of, the use of Fermi Advisory Committee. The status update right now is the committee has met. We have toured both Fermi and JFK. There have been a lot of tough questions that have been asked. The administration is currently compiling information with regards to those questions. The informational gathering is continuing, and the Committee would like to make a presentation to the Board possibly in time for next meeting. So I will keep you posted on that, just to give a status update. We'll have somebody sitting on that side of the fence. Also, the next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 over in the Barnard Board of Ed Conference Room. And that's it for committee reports. Approval of minutes, regular minutes, meeting minutes, March 25th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Do I gotta finish it?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the regular minutes of March 25th, 2014?
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Is there any discussion? Okay. Sensei None, can I get approval with a show of hands, please? Any abstentions? Very good. Approval of accounts and payroll, I believe there's none. Correspondence and communications, I believe there's none. Any other audiences? I believe there's none. What was the over and under? Do we have a need for executive session, Dr. Schuman?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in adjourned.